I'm gonna call this session of the Carson City School Board to order. Today is Tuesday, October 27th. First item on the agenda is the adoption of the Agenda as submitted.
So moved.
We have a motion by Dawn, second by Laurel. Any discussion from the trustees? Seeing none, any public comment regarding the Agenda?
There is no public comment?
Okay, seeing none. I'm gonna call the question. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Item number two, adjournment to closed session per NRS 288.220. Item four, to discuss labor relations with the district's management representatives. This is for discussion only, and the session will be closed.
...
And I'm going to reconvene this meeting, this session of the Carson City School Board. The next item on the agenda is the flag salute. Trustee Crossman, would you lead us in the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic on which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberate and just.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is item number five, Superintendent's Report. This is for information only. Good evening, Mr. Stokes.
Thank you, President Walker. It's nice to be with you this evening. Trustees also like to welcome anybody who might be joining us in the audience. Welcome. It's my privilege to give you a little bit of update with regards to some of the activities that have occurred recently. Like to tell you a little bit about Task Force Initiative for Educator Safety and Screening, which is the full name for the acronym TIES, which is an organization that has worked with the school district and is currently working with other school districts to provide a system of daily monitoring and an opportunity for COVID-19 testing should the condition arise. Since the middle of October, we have put into play this program and approximately 200 employees have elected to join TIES, which essentially consists of the downloading of an app on a mobile device that allows the employee to monitor their personal health conditions. If those conditions show any of the potential symptoms associated with COVID, they'll be prompted then to set up a COVID test. And according to our friends from TIES, the turnaround time on a personal COVID test is approximately 20 hours, which is much quicker than has been occurring through our local health department. So we're grateful to have that. We recognize that it will benefit our employees, especially as they are considering their health and certainly their assignment within the school district. On the last Friday and Saturday, about 100 of our employees were officially tested. That helps to kind of give people a comfort knowing that they are, whether or not they have been exposed to COVID and certainly with the ability to continue working. So we also have trained some of our staff members, some of our school nurses, who are able to perform those tests as well. So we'll continue to monitor this. I talked with the folks from TIES just this evening and they are going to make for opportunities for other staff members to join if they would like to. And I'll continue to update our employees as we go on. I'd also like to give a brief update regarding the return to school of our pre-K students through second graders at our elementary schools. The first day of school for these students, where they're no longer part of a cohort group, but actually attend four days of the school week, Tuesday through Friday, was October 20th. And Mondays remain a remote learning day for all the students in the district. So I want to make sure that that is explained. As I've had a chance to speak with principals and teachers who have in turn been able to speak with parents, people are very happy to have these students back in their care. And they have recognized and explained how good it is to have those students in their classrooms and they feel like they're able to do more work at a greater level of depth and also able to move faster than they were able to do just by, instead of just using the remote process. So we're happy for that. And I'd really like to say thank you to our principals, to our staff members, to our students and parents for their flexibility and support. This really has been a process. It's been a lot of work. But ultimately, we're trying to make those decisions that are in the best interest of our students. I know I've received some feedback from community members that are concerned that we're taking these types of steps even amid some of the spikes in individuals' health that is happening not only across the nation but also here in Nevada. And you know, the number of students that we have seen that have either been unengaged or have been under-engaged in doing their work far exceeds the numbers of students that we have seen who actually have come down with COVID. So while we are seeing those spikes, I want to say that our students, our teachers, our principals and our schools are doing good things. They're taking care of business in such a way that face masks are always being worn. Social distancing is a daily and an hourly occurrence where we're taking good care of our students. And so we're not seeing large numbers of illnesses in our schools. And so we're hoping that that can continue simply because of the manner in which school's being conducted. I have one other item that I'd like to share with you, but I wanted to see if there were any questions about any of those two items before I moved on.
Mrs. Stokes, how many children actually returned that were in full remote before?
You know, I don't have that number with me tonight. I can get that for you and send it out electronically, though. Thank you. Okay, for the remainder of my report tonight, I'd like to invite President Walker and Trustee Crossman to meet at the front of the stage here.
So, we're standing here because, did you want to start or do you want me to?
Ladies first.
So, we're here because, as you guys know, with our NASB annual convention, we always have awards. And this year, our NASB convention has been postponed to March. And so we wanted to recognize some of our award winners. So, we'd like to give congratulations to the new School Board Member of the Year, our Lupe Ramirez. And... So she was recognized by all the counties in the state of Nevada. And in her nomination that we included, I'm just going to read a little bit about what we, wait, so there's a background there. Mrs. Lupe Ramirez passionately advocates for the importance of education and culture within the Hispanic community and within the school community. She regularly attends student events at the schools within the district and speaks with parents and students about the benefits of attending college and embracing their cultural heritage. As a trustee, Mrs. Ramirez is an important liaison and, see, I used that word and then I can't pronounce it, liaison and role model to the Latino students and community. With her assistance, the school board in Carson held its first bilingual board meeting, a presentation that was enlightening to board members and to families. Mrs. Ramirez also arranged and coordinated for the entire board meeting on the school reopening plans to be translated into Spanish in live time. As a trustee, Mrs. Ramirez is thoughtful and professional. She's always prepared for meetings. She poses insightful questions and she has attended all professional trainings offered and is working on her certified public official certification. We were thrilled to nominate Lupe Ramirez for this, for the new School Board Member of the Year, and we are...
We had to fight her to nominate her.
And we are very, very pleased to announce that she was recognized by the state School Board Association. So congratulations, Lupe.
And just to add to that, Lupe, you beat out four other people.
So Carson City is a school district full of heroes and superstars. Amazing things happen here every day and we work hard to recognize those accomplishments. There are also many unsung heroes who do great things every day. One of those unsung heroes is our very own Renee Cortez. She is often the first contact anyone makes in trying to reach our superintendent. And more times than not, she is able to calm nerves and get the callers in touch with the right person and change attitudes in the process. Teachers, parents, even administrators all feel comfortable talking with Renee and value her advice. For our trustees, she is invaluable. She always knows when we need reminders of meetings, ensures our travel details are complete, and doesn't even bat an eye when she has to send multiple reminders. Not that I would know anything about that. At our meetings, a well-trained ear can hear her very polite sneezes. A watchful eye can see the body language between her and the board president to keep our meetings moving forward. And anyone who works within our system knows that she is the rock that everyone relies on. Renee Cortez is an amazing member of our team and I'm proud to announce that this year she is being named the Board Secretary of the Year by the Nevada Association of School Boards. Congratulations, Renee. And then I think also Laurel and I would just want to say, we also want to thank Stacy, who, as one of her duties as the past president of NASB, spearheaded the committee to recognize all school boards in the state and employees in all of the committee system. So thank you for your dedication to all of the schools in the state as well, Stacy.
And then I would just add too that we will still be having the banquet in March at the, at the convention when we have our conference in March. And so we're going to get to recognize you again then as well.
Congratulations.
Thank you, Mr. President. Members of the board, that concludes my report.
Thank you, Mr. Stokes. Our next item on the agenda is board reports. This is for information only. And I'm not seeing any student representatives. Okay, so we will start with Trustee Wilkie.
And I have Pioneer High's board announcements. Pioneer High has been busy this month, publication students wrote, edited and published our monthly newsletter. Find it on Facebook. Our senior spotlight for the month of October falls on Amanda Nichols. There's a great article about her in Carson Now. Leadership started a campus-wide kindness campaign. The goals of the campaign are to cultivate a culture of kindness and respect on Pioneer High and to spread positivity among students and staff during this stressful time. For their first activity, leadership students wanted to focus on expressing gratitude and respect to the team that worked so hard to make their school operated. They decorated pumpkins and collected and encouraged notes from fellow students, delivered both to every staff member on campus as a token of appreciation. Thursday morning, Pioneer held their second annual Panther Rise and Shine. Students came to school early for a special tasty breakfast provided by Nutrition Services, our thanks to Chef John and Ms. Karen for arranging the spread. Even with the masks on and social distancing maintained, the sleepy teens and staff were happy to be out in the brisk fall morning watching the sunrise with their peers. Pioneer's Spanish classes are organizing to donate to the Nevada State Museum to honor the upcoming De los Muertos. Thank you. The holiday honors the family members who passed on by leaving offerings of food and gifts. Staff and students have contributed items for the display, which can be viewed starting Wednesday, October 28th through Saturday, November 7th between 8:30 and 4:30. Thank you, and this concludes the announcements for Pioneer High.
Oh, and then I have another announcement for NASB. If there's anybody interested in any of the leadership roles open, the deadline is October 30th and you should have gotten an email from Deb with the forms. If you have any questions, please ask me. We'll be having a meeting on the 5th to go over the slate of officers.
Thank you. Trustee Ramirez? Or should we say, new School Board Member of the Year Ramirez?
Well, first of all, I want to say thank you so much to Chairperson Walker and Trustee Crossman for taking the time to write that generous nomination. So I really appreciate it. I'm very touched by this nomination. Second of all, I do have a report from Empire Elementary School. They have a little star who was the winner of the fire prevention poster contest. So Adrian Manzano, he was named as the winner of the state fire prevention and awareness poster contest for his age category, third grade. His poster was placed on billboards throughout Nevada. Additionally, he was, he also received a plaque from the Nevada State Fire Marshal Division and recognition by National Fire Protection Association. This is huge. So congratulations to Adrian Manzano and his proud parents. That concludes my report.
Thank you. Trustee Crossman.
Okay, Mr. Brown at Fritch wanted to wish everyone a happy Nevada Day weekend. And Dr. Ward de Joseph from Fremont wanted to say that it is so good to see all of the happy children and all of the learning that is occurring with the change. She said definitely the pre-K through second grade, they're doing a lot more productive, a lot of production going on since last week. Also, she wanted to let everyone know that parent teacher conferences will continue next Monday. And if parents are unable to attend, the teachers are making individual videos for every family who is unable to attend. And those will be able to go out to their families. So that concludes my report.
Thank you. Trustee Creeny.
Dr. Conley at Eagle Valley Middle School has some news to share. I talked about it a couple of weeks ago, but they had a juvenile diabetes research foundation fundraiser and they were able to raise $300, allowing a dollar donation from each student who wanted to wear non-SSA or hats that day. Also, another fundraiser, their cookie dough fundraiser was delivered and the top three cookie dough sales students were, in third place, Liam Marler, in second place, Sidney Espinoza, and in first place, Kaylee Ann Lewis. And they all received Visa gift cards. Three teachers, Mrs. Billheimer, Ms. Chandler, and Mrs. Filicamo are volunteering their time to supervise and assist students during homework club after school, Tuesday, Wednesday, and Thursday. Thursday. And then lastly, students had the opportunity this week to dress up. Today, they wore Nevada colors, and tomorrow, Wednesday, October 28th, and Thursday, the 29th, they will be allowed to wear Halloween costumes. And that concludes the report.
Thank you, Don. Trustee Barner.
From Carson Middle School. They started their musical theater and choir, and they're working on their first virtual performances. The students are recording audio at home and submitting them to be combined into a virtual ensemble. The tracks are then layered over their in-class performances, make a virtual ensemble, and they'll be shared very soon. The orchestra did a virtual October concerts, and those can be found on the CMS Music website and the CSD Orchestra Facebook page. And something I thought was kind of interesting is their computer science has started a friendly competition with Eagle Valley. For our last, for their last keyboarding test, students were given a prize for beating the required benchmark for the seventh grade, and that is 35 words per minute with 80% accuracy. The competition to see who the best seventh graders in Carson City are will be held in December. And the CMS online edgenuity teachers held a family workshop last week. They had great attendance and engagements from our online teachers and families, by the online teachers and families. And they're also having a wetlands cleanup and build day on November 7th. And there'll be various community partners, including the Rotary Club, who awarded them with a large grant last spring to purchase materials to install a walkway area in the wetlands so it could be used as a classroom. They'd like to give a shout out to Mr. Cassioppo, who has found the time to come survey the area in his busy schedule and for his longstanding support of the project. And also thank you, Mr. Stokes. They wanted to thank you for your continued support. They'd also like to congratulate Alicia Barrios, Maely Green, and Ann Davis for winning the CMS scary story writing contest. And those can be read on the library website. And that's the report for Carson Middle School. But I'd also like to take a few minutes to thank Ms. Squires, Mrs. Squires from, the principal from Empire Elementary School, for allowing me to come into the classrooms and watch one of their online classes. I got to give thanks to Ms. Williams, who is the online teacher for the remote, full remote. She's a fourth grade teacher there, and I was able to watch a whole lesson that she provided. And I got to say, she did a wonderful job. She had a lot of engagement from the students and gave a lot of positive feedback to them, and it was really, I thought, a great lesson. I thought she was a great teacher, so I'd like to thank her for her continued work in that. And I'd also like to thank Mr. Sadler, principal at Carson Middle School, for allowing me to come in and then providing me a lesson, I guess, behind-the-scenes kind of view of edgenuity. He spent quite a bit of time with me, showing me how it works and all the back parts of it. And then also was able to visit with Mr. Whitson, I believe it was, who was one of the six remote teachers they have there to support the kids. And so I want to thank him for taking the time to talk to me and give me an insight in how things are going with the edgenuity program, at least at the Carson Middle School. So that's my report.
Thank you. Trustee Cassioppo.
Thank you. Just wanted to wish everybody a happy upcoming Nevada Day. Have fun. Everybody deserves a day off, so this is a nice opportunity, so wanted to just extend that. Wanted to remind everybody at the high school, both high schools to pay attention to scholarships. October and November tend to be busy scholarship months as well as March, so heads up for March. But those that are interested in going to college, it's a nice opportunity to pay attention to what's available to you out there. I also wanted to, kind of a little shout out to the CTE program. I have a personal friend whose daughter, after two years of arm twisting, convinced her parents to let her come to the high school, and she's very, she's been at our high school now for two weeks and is loving it. She's got introduced to some of the CTE opportunities that are there. I believe she's participating in something now, but I think a lot of times we don't talk enough about CTE. We, we have a tremendous program, and this was another example of somebody that I think is going to benefit from it. So not only do I want to thank Mrs. Fuson for, back in your term as principal, for helping to enhance that as well as everything else, but also to Mr. Chambers. I wanted to thank him, and I just think it offers an invaluable service to a lot of these students, and so I'm, I'm glad that it's always so vibrant. And I think that'll do it.
Thank you, Joe. Couple of things from Seelager. They just want to report that their K-2 rollout went smoothly, and Mrs. Zona reports that it's great to see the specialist teachers being able to work with small groups again. I get the sense it's starting to feel like a normal school again, so sounds like great things are happening at Seelager. Also, I want to thank Chartwells, who has, who have given us all refillable aluminum bottle. They also provided one of these for all of our students, so thank you to Chartwells for helping us support our sustainable, I guess, I don't know, what would you say, Mark? Sustainable practices in the district. And I wanted to wish everybody a happy Nevada Day, like Joe, and then also, we're right on the heels of a election, and so regardless of what your beliefs are or your persuasions, I encourage everybody to take the time and go vote. And I certainly wish all candidates well on November 3rd, but we have two on the board who, we all know how hard you work in a campaign, and so Joe and Stacy keep fighting the good fight, and we're there with you every step of the way, so good luck on next week. So the next item on the agenda is association reports. This is for discussion only. I can't see Mr. Wallace, but no, no report, and I know Ms. Cortez does have a report to read for us.
Good evening. On behalf of CESA, Loretta Marson would like to provide the following report. They recently had elections for CESA, and the officers, our president is Carrie Finn, treasurer is Jeff White, advisory council for food services is Terry Teeter, and for instructional support is Beverly Singleton. And that's the report, Mr. Walker.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is public comment. Comments will be accepted in person through telephonic participation or through virtual participation via email at publiccomment@carson.k12.nv.us. Comments may be made by members of the public on any matter within the authority of this board. Please note the public comment will be taken on items marked for possible action before action is taken on such items, and members of the public are encouraged to comment on such items at the time they are being considered. Although members of the board may respond to questions and discuss issues raised during public comment, no action may be taken on such a matter until the matter is placed on an agenda for action at a meeting of the board. In making public comment, speakers are asked to identify themselves for the record. Speakers are further asked to refrain from speaking over each other if participating by telephone. Speakers are asked to limit their comments to no more than three minutes, whether in writing or oral, and not to simply repeat comments made by others. This is for discussion only. Do we have any public comment in the room? Seeing none. Any public comment on the phone, Raymond?
Seeing no public comment online.
Okay, thank you. Any public comment via email, Renee? Okay, seeing no public comment. We will move on to item number nine. Discussion on possible action on approval of recommendations of the Benefit Committee regarding group healthcare insurance plan design and renewal of coverage for the calendar year January 1st, 2021 through December 31st, 2021. This was for possible action, and I call Dr. Delphin and Valerie Clark. Good evening to both of you.
Thank you for having me. Good to see you all again this year. I'm Valerie Clark with Clark &amp; Associates. I have been the employee benefits broker for the Carson City School District for many, many years. I believe it's number 17 this year, so it's a pleasure to be with you tonight.
Good evening.
Whoa, sorry.
Buenas tardes. I'm Jose Delphin, and thank you for having us tonight. And tonight, Mrs. Clark and I are going to kind of go over the overview of our renewal and what transpired during Benefits Committee processes. But firstly, I want to thank the following associations, led by their representatives for the Teachers Association, Mr. Brian Wallace, for CESA, Carrie Finn, for the Administrators Association, Dr. Jennifer Ward. I really thank them for their hard work and representing their memberships throughout the process. It went really well, I thought, and we had some really great discussion and some good feedback, honest feedback about what was going on with our health benefits. And we've been prepping pretty much for an entire year to be able to get this renewal out tonight for you for approval. And I want to say that thanks to Valerie, Clark, and Associates, we have still a very rich plan to offer our staff. Let me set this down. And I can stand here before you confidently and let you know that our plans are well-received by our staff. One of the marching orders that we received from the associations was not to do anything different to the HSA, which is our high deductible health plan. And we took those instructions to heart, and we listened, and we kept that plan intact. In fact, you know, if you think about the $300 that the district gives to the employees for that plan, over a year, that's about $3,600. We have people who have over $20,000 in their HSA account since its inception, and more, actually. And given the, you know, conservative use of the HSA plan, it's a really great benefit. And in any dire circumstances, it's still, you know, just like anything else, just a great way to have a great benefit and be able to take care of yourself and your family. With that, we did some minor changes. We did dissolve the low HMO plan. It was very low populated. It was under a couple dozen people. And so because of that, we're able to do some education via the memberships and also the school district and Clark &amp; Associates to be able to offer other plans that are even better than the low HMO was. And based on what we know in our trajectory for plans, the HSA plan is the most popular at this time, and it's grown. And I think we're probably number one in northern Nevada for that HSA plan from prominence. So I'll be quiet and let Valerie do some talking here, and let her explain to you what some of the nuances are.
Thank you, Jose. As, as Jose mentioned, we have been meeting for the better part of the last year, looking forward to this renewal. We knew we were up against a little bit of a tough year. We knew our claims were running a little high. Our loss ratio was high. We had a lot of usage of the program. We want to encourage usage, of course, but when usage becomes higher in price than the price that we're paying for the insurance, we, we get a little more concerned because we know that's going to cause an increase in rates. So we had many good meetings with the Benefits Committee. Then COVID hit. We, the meetings all stopped for a while. We realized budget was going to be the biggest issue coming up towards renewal because of COVID. We knew budgets were going to get cut, and we wanted to prepare for that as quickly as possible. So we met with prominence health plan. We expected a 20% renewal. After all was said and done, they gave us a 10% renewal, which I thought was extremely fair. After more negotiations with the committee, I had some good conversations with Brian Wallace. We were able to negotiate a rate cap for Plan Year 2022, so this time next year, of no more than 9%, which is a phenomenal thing to do in such an uncertain time and when your loss ratio is running very high. So we've got good protections in place for Plan Year 2022, no more than 9% next time I'm here in front of you next year. And we have changed the plan design. We've upped some of the deductibles, but we have not touched the high deductible health plan, which also provides that very generous HSA contribution by the district as well. So all in all, it's an extremely good benefits package. Very proud of it. You should be very proud of it as a district. It's, it's, it's one of the best I've, I've worked with my entire career, actually, of 28 years. So ultimately, after all was said and done, your costs for next year will only go up by $77,000, and out of a $10 million contract, I would say that's extremely good. And you know, going into 2022, you're protected as well.
We could hold you to that.
That's something you can hold me to, and there's very few things and benefits you can be held to these days.
Thank you. Do we have any questions from the trustees? Do you have a question?
Just a comment. I just want to thank everybody too, because it always ends up, you know, we just all come together and we see the big picture, and everybody works together to make a solution that we can all afford to live with. And, and I can't tell you how much I appreciate the hard work that goes into this. And Valerie, it seems like every year you go to bat for us so much more than the last year, and I can't tell you how much we appreciate you and your company and looking forward our, you know, the best thing for our district and our employees, and I do appreciate that. But it always comes down to teamwork here, and you always hear bad things about the union and the associations and the boards, but I swear Carson's got the best board and relationships with our associations and our employees, and I just, I'm so thankful for that in this, especially in this era of irritation of people, so thank you so much.
Yeah, and I have to just chime in there, because in my 28-year career, I have never worked with a committee year after year after year like your Benefits Committee. They are fabulous people. It's a cohesive bunch, a very thoughtful and deliberative bunch, and it's tough to find that nowadays. So kudos to all of you for the leadership and the encouragement and the willingness to work together through these tougher times. It's been a true pleasure on my part as well.
Yeah, Valerie, thank you. I, I just wanted to thank you as well. I know we look at healthcare and my work every year, and we have people that help us out, and it is, it's crazy. I mean, ever since like the, you know, since the Affordable Care Act to what we're going through now, it's, you know, group plans went away, all these kinds of things, and little by little, things are trying to restructure, and it's always interesting how to make the deductibles, make the premiums, make the coverages all work, and it's, it's not easy to do for anybody that doesn't pay attention to this, so thank you very much for all you've done for us.
Thank you. My pleasure.
All right, seeing no other discussion from the trustees, I'll see if there's any public comment.
Seeing no public comment online.
Do we have any in-person public comment? Seeing none. Any public comment emails, Renee? Okay, so this is a matter for possible action, so I'd entertain a motion from the floor.
I move that the Carson City School District Board of Trustees accept and approve the recommendations of the Benefit Committee as submitted for their renewal of coverage for the calendar year of January 1st, 2021 through December 31st, 2021.
Second by Wilkie.
All right, we have a motion by Richard, second by trustee Wilkie. Any further discussion from the trustees? I'll call the question. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Thank you so much for your work.
Thank you, trustees.
Thank you.
Thank you, trustees.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda is discussion and possible action on a resolution designated as the 2020 School Bond Resolution declaring the necessity of incurring a bonded indebtedness on behalf of the Carson City School District for the purpose of acquiring, constructing, improving, and equipping school facilities through the payment of the installment purchase agreement by and between the district and Bank of America Public Capital Corp., dated as February 8th, 2017, authorizing the issuance of the Carson City School District Nevada General Obligation Limited Tax School Bonds, Series 2020, in the aggregate principal amount not to exceed $5,500,000, providing the terms and conditions and forms of the bond and providing the effective date. This is for possible action, and I welcome A.J. Feeling and Marty Johnson. Welcome, gentlemen.
Thank you, Mr. President. It's quite a mouthful for an agenda item, so.
So is that, I was wondering if maybe you did that to make up for the lack of screen for the real small fonts.
You know, I try to throw you off if I can. I thought maybe that would, would do it, but I think you caught me on that one. Thank you again, trustees, for having me back. At the September 22nd board meeting, we discussed a refund, potential refunding of installment purchase agreement or the IPA. This was a financing done to fund energy savings projects around the district. Those projects are in place, and those projects, in order to pay for that financing, we transfer about $350,000 to $400,000 a year out of the general fund into the debt service fund. So effectively, the savings is paying for those projects at this point. So the opportunity, again, is that this IPA installment purchase agreement can be refunded, and by doing so, it moves that obligation out of the general fund into the debt service fund. The benefit of that, well, maybe I spoke to some concern, some benefits and concern with that. The concern was that, that by doing, by that move, it would lower the bonding capacity potentially we have from the debt service fund. Due to exceptionally low rates right now, due to property tax growth, and being able to, thanks to Mr. Johnson, running some numbers and looking back at historically what we were expecting, so looking back in March of 19, and talking about capacity, we were looking at from, from about this point on to 2025, having about $40 million in bonding capacity. So by doing this, it reduces that capacity down to somewhere between $37 and $38 million, it looks like. So there is some impact on the bonding capacity. On the flip side of that, there is this general fund impact, which, again, being in the middle of COVID, as you know, has had a pretty significant impact on our budget for this year, and then looking down the road at this potential funding formula and the impact of that, the latest numbers that we've looked at from the commission actually look a little worse than they did a number of months ago. So initially, we were looking at a hold harmless, which, again, is a point where you're frozen in your level of revenues for four to five years. Now it looks like it may go five to six years. So, again, this, doing this refunding would take some of the hit out of the general fund, and so it would free up some resources for us as we go through some of these years ahead. So with that, and after conversation in the last meeting, Mr. Johnson did his good work and went out to get some more information for us. And Marty, I don't know if you want to speak to some of that?
You have to, there we go. For the record, Marty Johnson with J&amp;A Consulting Group. It seems like it's long timers night tonight. I heard the insurance person say 28 years. I can beat that. I've been doing bonds for you guys for 30 years. So it's been a long time. But as A.J. said after the last meeting, we did look at what's available. We do have a bank that, if you adopt this resolution tonight, that will provide the funding for the refinancing of the installment purchase agreement at a 1.64%. And so what that does is, again, as A.J. said, is two things. One, it lowers the payments on the installment purchase agreement by over $300,000 in total. We're not extending the term of the installment purchase agreement. It still matures at the same time it would have otherwise matured, but we're able to lower the payments by $300,000. And then again, as you mentioned, move those payments out of the general fund, or, yeah, out of the general fund and into the debt service fund. And maybe one other item, just to add on the bonding capacity, is we have always tried to be very conservative as we estimate what we're looking at going forward, both in interest rates, in terms of property tax revenues, and things like that. And so as time goes by and property tax revenues grow at, you know, say 4% instead of 2% or 3%, as we would have in our funding model, and interest rates come in at, you know, for example, 1.65% instead of the 3% or 4% that we would have been estimating because that's where rates were back in 2019, all of those things combined to help increase that bonding capacity. And so that's why you're not seeing a $5 million drop from what we had before. What we had before has increased over time, and then we are now looking at using $5 million of that to take care of this, which frees up money in your general fund. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions unless you've got more to add.
Stacy, looks like you're primed and ready to go.
Just a comment. I think, Marty, I think we've been here twice the two times I've been on the board, so it's one of the most familiar faces we have. And we appreciate it, and I don't know if the other board members know, but you've come up from Vegas to do these presentations, and we appreciate it. And just like Valerie, I can't think of another person that thinks more about our goodwill and our standing and saving us money and being able to do the projects that we want to do, and I can't thank you enough for that. And I think that's one of the reasons we have one of the best bond ratings in the state. So thank you for everything you've done for the last 30 years. We appreciate it.
A.J., I'm assuming it's your recommendation that we do this rebonding?
Thank you, trustee Varner. Yeah, I, I mean, the concern, I try not to get too animated with the concern, but it's real. I'm worried about the, what the next five-plus years look like. I'm worried about this year. And in the larger, you know, the district overall budget is over $100 million a year, and $350,000 may not seem big relatively, but every little bit helps, and within the general fund expenditures of, in the realm of $60 million, it starts, you know, it starts adding up. So, yeah, that would be my recommendation.
This is a matter for potential item or action. Entertain a motion from the board?
I move that the Carson City School District Board of Trustees approve the 2020 School Bond Resolution as submitted, authorizing the prepayment of the installment purchase agreement by and between the district and Bank of America Public Capital Corp., dated as of February 8th, 2017, authorizing the superintendent to arrange for the sale of General Obligation Limited Tax Refunding Bonds, Series 2020, in an amount not exceeding $5,500,000.
All right, we have a motion from Richard, a second from Joe. Any further discussion from the trustees? Seeing none, I'll call for any public comment.
Seeing no public comment online.
All right. Do we have any public comment from participants in the room? Seeing none. Renee, any email public comment?
No public comment, Mr. Walker.
All right, I'll call the question. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you so much for your help. Thank you, A.J. Next item on the agenda is item number 11, presentation on WEADA access testing for English language learners in the Carson City School District for the 2019-2020 school year. This is for discussion only, and I'll welcome Chad Hicks, and I'm guessing Dr. Tanya Corone at some point. Welcome to both of you.
Good evening, everyone. For the record, my name is Chad Hicks, as you know, and I'm the director of elementary schools and English language programs, and I'm happy to be with you tonight in person. I haven't seen a lot of you in person for quite some time. We're going to discuss the English language program and access testing this year, and I would like to provide a little background. For 20-plus years, I've worked as administrator at three Title I schools, and so most of my career has been working with English language learners for some time in a variety of capacities. So I'm really excited about this new position, and I'm grateful to be in it, and I'm grateful to be working with all the building leaders and with all of you. And I don't know if I'm going to be able to juggle everything. Is it okay to sit down? I noticed the previous folks stood up, and I feel kind of...
Do whatever makes you comfortable, Mr. Hicks.
And Renee, I can go ahead and switch the... I'm, right, have to turn it on? Oh. I'm sorry. Oh, right here, just... I will get this down, I'm sorry. Okay, so access testing, we take access testing once a year, and some of you are familiar with it, others may not be, but access testing is a WEADA exam, and it's how we take a look at our English language learners, how their performance. And the primary goal is to really see how they're performing in the four domains, which is listening, speaking, reading, and writing. And it's important to note that, and this is maybe kind of confusing, but our oral language skills, listening and speaking, develop faster than our literacy skills, and our receptive language skills, listening and reading, develop faster than productive language skills, speaking and writing. And so this is, it's a difficult exam for a lot of our ELL learners. Okay, this is an individual student report that we receive after the exam, and what we see on this report is, we'll see our four domains, and I believe you guys have it in front of you here, but on the left side, you'll see the four domains, and then we'll have our composite scores, and just below those colorful domains, and then we have our proficiency levels. In the proficiency levels, you'll see a whole number score, and then there will be some sections I'll talk about in just a bit that kind of discuss where we are within that domain at that particular time. And then the scale score is basically a growth over time, and I'll go into more detail in just a moment here. And then at the bottom of the exam, you have your proficiency levels, and then we have our students, at each level, it'll kind of describe, at this level, this is what students should be able to do. And so it gives a lot of information to our parents and our educators. So... Okay, so the ultimate goals, we're trying to grow our children, and we have our limited English proficient. We have levels one through four, as you can see here, and at about 4.5 is when we would consider our students exiting the program. But it's important to note that we still have to monitor our students to make sure that they are succeeding. And within each one of these levels, as I stated, you'll, there are, it gives us ideas of where they are at this point in time, so very important information here. Okay, the can-do descriptors, as I just described earlier, are examples of what language learners can do at various stages. A second grader with a 4.0 in listening and an eighth grader with a 4.0 in listening are exposed to very different grade-level appropriate content as they test. The score report also reflects the same proficiency level. Eighth graders demonstrating more skill by responding to more challenging content. So it's, this, and I'll go into details of why this is important in just a moment. Scale scores, as I stated, that's growth over time. Scale scores take into account differences in item difficulty to place all students on a single continuum that stretches from kindergarten through grade 12. Okay, now we're going to take a look at our data, and I'm not sure if you've had a chance to look over our data. I believe you have it there in front of you. What this is, is this is the, we see the number of WEADA adequate growth percentile, or we'll call it the, we'll just call it adequate growth percentile, but I call it also adequate growth to proficiency. And for each one of our schools here, you'll notice at the top, met WEADA AGP. You have our elementary schools to the left, and then we have the number of students. So out of 47 students at Fritsch, 32 met AGP, and you'll see the percentage on the right. So if you haven't had a chance to look at that, you can take a moment and look at that, and you just scroll down, and then we'll, if you would like to ask some questions, that's fine.
Chad, I do have a question.
Okay.
Were these, when they do the access testing, was this testing impacted by the school's closures in March, or was the testing done in February before?
My understanding is the testing was done in February. This is the only assessment that we have from last year. Normally, we're up here presenting all of our SBAK data and everything, but this is, we were able, if I'm correct, Dr. Scott?
The testing was completed before school shut down.
Yeah. So as you'll notice, and I'm not sure if you had a chance to fully look it over, I'll go on to the next one here.
Chad, before you move on, I have a question.
Yes.
I was wondering, viewing the AGP for the high school, 16.6%, it's quite a bit lower than the elementary schools, the middle schools, and I'm just wondering why.
Okay, that's a great question, and that's the trend I was hoping you'd notice. It's a very difficult test. Going back, let me see if I can go back a few slides. I'm not even going to attempt it, but going back to that slide where we had the levels of proficiency, our goal is to achieve 0.5% growth. Back another one. Up, right here. Within each one of those, we want to achieve 0.5% growth. If you could think, think of a fourth-grade student coming in at a level two, we have to catch them up, and we have to really learn how to differentiate our instruction because it is much more difficult for students as they progress through the grade levels to become proficient in another language. Because it is much more difficult for students as they progress through the grade levels to become proficient in another language. So, it's absolutely critical, and we'll talk about how we do that, that we get them while they're young. And if they do come in later and they are behind, we have to do something to meet their needs. And that's why we can't do it in a single 45-minute block of language explicit instruction. We have to, it has to be all day, every day, and it has to be intentional. And I'll go into detail in just a moment. Those content areas are absolutely critical. Okay, thank you. And then you'll notice over here, the difference in our data is you have the levels on the side. How many Level Ones through Level Four. And it's the same, these are elementary schools. And it may be difficult to read, but I had to stack them side by side. But you can, you can see how our schools have performed. And then...
And the levels don't correlate with grade levels, it's where they're at, so you can have...
Exactly, and also...
The two Level Ones are the tenant empire, five could be kindergarten, five could be fifth grade.
Yeah, exactly. Depending on where they are in their language, they could be a newcomer coming into the country. And it's also, like, you know, we don't, sometimes we get them confused with our proficiency levels also in Sback, scoring a one, two, three, or four. So, moving on to our middle schools, you'll notice a difference. You notice, looking, just going down the list, Carson Middle School, how many met AGP compared to how many did not meet AGP? Moving on to Carson High School. Eagle Valley, then Carson High School, 28 met AG, or did, met AGP out of a possible 141. So, you can kind of see the significance here. Okay, so the primary area of focus, English language learners, they're reclassified as English proficient and exit EL language supports before their academic language is sufficient. There's great concern that they're not going to be college and career-ready. And so, that's why monitoring is absolutely critical. And we have to make sure that we're meeting all their needs, obviously. Schools must ensure that language instruction, as you know, and educational programs and supports are provided to English learners are sufficient, high-quality, and that they develop more complex academic language. Sorry. And so, how we do this, I'm almost done with it. There we go, thank you. Should we start over? Okay, so successful EL programs and planning. So, what you'll see in successful programs, and this is really my goal, and this is what's nice about this position. I oversee elementary schools and really, I don't want their, Dr. Austin did some incredible work. And I'm building off all of that success. But what I do notice over all my years of experience, we can't be separate. It has to all be one, we have to work together in these programs. Of course, we need explicit language instruction taught, so students have that time to practice during the 45-minute period. But our regular ed teachers have to be aligned with our English, our ELDs. They have to, we have to be planning together. And that's why it's so important, and I'm going to have Dr. Scott come up and discuss some of the training that we're going to do in just a moment. This is also an area where all of our TSI, our targeted support interventions, our subgroups, this is the area of this and IEPs. This is, these subgroups are the areas that really we have to target if we expect our student, overall student proficiency to go up. So, what that means is purposeful planning, content objectives, language objectives. And language objectives are exactly what you, I put here, is if we're, if there's a lesson where a teacher in planning, they're thinking, they're seeing all of their kids in the classroom. And if they anticipate that maybe some children may not understand some of the vocabulary, we need to meet their, you know, we need to make sure that there's an understanding of that vocabulary. And that's how we scaffold and provide those supports for our English language learners. Because if we don't do that, what happens is they sit in the back of the room quietly. And they don't participate, and that's absolutely the worst thing that could ever happen. Utilizing visuals, graphs, maps, graphic organizers, authentic video. When I was a principal at Echo Loder Elementary School in Washoe County, all of our parent professionals worked in small groups, teaching vocabulary by taking snippets of movies to discuss what a vocabulary, kind of, not only discuss, but show our English language learners what a vocabulary word means and see it in a video. So, strategies like that really help tremendously. Activating prior knowledge, every student comes to the door with a different set of experiences. And I want to kind of shout out to Empire STEM Academy. Last, last year, the year, and that was actually the year before, I took our coaches to go see Lemelson Academy in Washoe County. And they scored very high in their, I believe, 100% frame reduced launch and extremely high EL population. And you'll see some of those strategies taking place at Empire STEM Academy right now, where our students are, they're held accountable for taking critical stances, explaining their reasoning, doing real-life problem-solving. One example is working on power bills together as a team and trying to figure out how to bring their power bills down. And those kinds of things are what need to happen in our schools. We need to set up those structures where there's dialogue and collaboration. And our English language learners don't learn by being spoken to. They have to co-construct meaning from each other. So, it's up to us to make sure that we're creating those structures. And I just kind of talked about all this, it's the cooperative learning, conversation, dialogue. Example that I absolutely love is Socratic Seminar. Right now is very challenging for English language learners, especially if they're still at home. They need to be in school. And I've seen Socratic Seminar done on a screen, on a, over, on our, remotely. It was great, but it's still not the same as being in person. So, that's, it's, these are the things that we need to do. Team presentations, presenting, absolutely critical. The students don't have that confidence in themselves or their voices, so it's something that needs to happen. And placing an EL student in front of a computer and expecting them to learn does not work. So, I'm really hoping that when our students are in our schools, that they are, they are actually, I, it's okay to be in front of a computer a little bit, but that's the time when we really need to create those structures. And it's tough right now because of the social distancing, it's next to impossible. But I'm seeing a lot of creative ideas out there in our schools, and so, we just have to keep doing it. And now I'd like to bring up Dr. Scott. And I'd like her to talk a little bit about how we, because it's absolutely critical that, as I stated, those content areas, we need our teachers to be trained, we can't, in the classrooms as well. And I know you've been working on our, I want to say, not PSYOP, um... HQSI, but it needs to continue happening, it'd be nice if all of our teachers were trained.
Chad, we have two questions for you, so I'll let Joe, then Richard, and then Tanya will call you up, thanks.
Thanks Chad. You know, when you look at these numbers, most of our schools, you know, as far as did not meet, we're at a 50% or higher number. But in a vacuum, like, for me, it doesn't mean a whole lot. How do we compare with other districts in our state, other states? I mean, is this a problem, I assume this is kind of a problem everybody's having, but where do we fall in there? Are we behind the curve, are we ahead of the curve, are we...
You know, I haven't, I haven't done a comparison yet, I just started in this program. But across districts, I can tell you Title I schools, I've done comparisons with high ELL populations. And without, like, the school I just mentioned, Lemelson Academy, those schools that have those structures in place where students are not being spoken to, but they're problem-solving, like, an example would be like a project-based learning activity or something like that, when it's embedded throughout the day. What you'll see is, you'll see the EL students, or English language learners, actually developing confidence. I was a principal at the, it was Echo Loder Elementary School. And it was, I was tasked with launching the first Northern Nevada World Language Academy. And we partnered with the Department of Defense, and we also taught Mandarin to our kindergarteners. And we ran a dual-language program. It took quite some time to start building that confidence in our students. And we will never build that confidence unless those structures are in place. So, I think we're going to, we do a pretty good job, but we can definitely do better. And right now is extremely challenging because it's difficult. We've noticed just putting the masks on the faces, the students aren't talking to each other.
I completely understand that, I think we're, it's tough. That's why I'm thinking with numbers like this before, you know, before we got into COVID and all that. I'd be curious, and I don't know if it's hard information to gather, but I'd be curious, kind of where we, how we rate in the state and with other states. You know, districts in other states, if that's data that's reasonable to obtain, I'd be curious. Because it gives us kind of a, an internal check and lets us know, hey, we're on the mark, we're gaining ground, or we're already in great shape. So, if that's something we can gather, I would like to see it.
I can talk to Dr. Medina about that, definitely, and we can get that information.
Thank you.
Sure.
Just before, Richard, if I can follow up with that, even to see how our own district has done in previous years, if you've got some of this data, that, I think that'd be helpful. I know that this next year is going to be an anomaly, but just to kind of track where we were would be helpful, too.
Sure. And I can tell you, across the state, those, the secondary schools, UWS, it will definitely decline over time if we do not get those students earlier on. That's pretty much a standard across the board. And then how that works is students are, they're, they're in a, what is called a typical peer group each year. So, they're compared each year to other students that have scored the previous year similar to them. And then, and Dr. Medina can explain this in more detail, but each year, they are up against a different peer, similar peers that scored the previous year or so. And then they fall within a ranking in between that group. So, we can get that data for you.
I just have two questions. You stated earlier that the English language learners in high school require, I guess, a greater attention, for lack of a better term. Is that occurring, are they getting more instructions in learning English?
It's difficult, because they have multiple subjects. And it's, I think there's something to be said about being in that one classroom all day and not moving around. And it is difficult, because basically, they have, my understanding is there is a program that they're in, a portion of the day. And Dr. Scott can speak in more detail about this, but then they're also embedded in their core content areas. And so, that's, sometimes they tend to hide in back of the room, and they're not confident, there's a little bit of insecurity about their speaking skills. And our teachers at the secondary level sometimes are limited with time. And it tends to be presenting information to the students. And unless we have block time, more time, they, you know, those collaborative structures, unless it's planned purposely, it doesn't, you know, it doesn't take place. So, it's much more difficult for them to...
Are the EL teachers pushing into the classrooms then to assist the regular teachers?
Yes.
Okay. I just have one other question when you're finished, I'm sorry. Is that it?
That's...
No, I'm wondering, I believe that the access testing may be taking place now?
The access testing is going to take place, I believe it's in January.
Okay, I thought they were doing so now, in January, when that testing...
They're doing the WEATA testing now.
All the WEATA testing now. How long before the results of that is available?
They each school, I don't, they, I'm not sure how long it takes them to score, they score their own, don't they? Okay. You changed...
Dr. Scott, could you come up to a microphone, please, for the record? Thank you. And I apologize for old habits die hard by calling you by your maiden name.
Good evening. The WEATA test that the EL designees are giving presently is the WEATA models, which is a benchmark. So, it's more of a measure, a benchmarking assessment that's used to inform instruction. The data shared was from the WEATA access, which is our, what we give a state ELPA, which is a general term in English language proficiency assessment, which presently happens to be the access test. And that's our high stakes, once a year standardized assessment. So, there are two different measures for two different purposes.
Okay. Yeah, it is going to be interesting, like Laurel said, to see if there's a difference from last year to this current year, I guess, with the school being out and the part of the students not being in classrooms and et cetera. And just one quick question, too, do you know how many of the non, or the English language students are not in the classroom on the hybrid, I mean, in the remote? Or, I'm kind of messing up here, I'm sorry. How many of the English language students are remote versus in the hybrid system?
I don't know exactly how many, I can tell you too many, though. And we're trying to bring the students back to in-person learning as much as possible. We're realizing in the elementary schools that there's absolute, they're, it's unfortunate because there are circumstances where they're absolutely not engaged, and they don't have the supports at home to be engaged. So, when I met with the building leaders, that was one of our number one, probably our number one concern right now. We need to get them back in the buildings, but we're restricted based on the size of our classrooms and capacity right now. So, but they're our first priority.
And going back to your question, what's interesting about that AGP, it's as though, if you think about swimming, I know you were asking about in comparison to other schools, it's kind of a unique measure. And then if you think about a swim team, they are, it's a competitive sport, right? The swim teams compete, but it's still like that individual swimmer that needs to best themselves for the group of the group. And that's kind of how the AGP works. So, essentially what Mr. Hicks was saying, if I'm a fourth grader who's a level two, my AGP, my growth percentile is going to be based on another student who's at that same grade level, at that same language level. So, any other student across the state or across the nation is going to, it's going to be an equal playing field in that way. Does that make sense? And also going back to the data, as far as your question about secondary, that growth percentile, it's about making that growth within a given timeframe. And in our case, that timeframe is five years from the time that they entered as an English learner. So, you can see the older you get that timeframe, you've exceeded that timeframe, it's less likely you're going to make that growth percentile.
And I think it also really points out the importance of early interventions. Because as a former ESL teacher, I'll tell you, those assessments are tiered. And as you see students age through those tiers, you really see that complexity, like sixth grade, it's like, whoa. You know, I mean, just the levels just pop up. And so, I think that's why we really want to get these kids young. And if you look at the data, our elementary schools are doing a great job moving those kids because that's key to them being successful in the secondary schools. And I think elementary tends to really, all teaching could be conducive to the strategies we teach. But elementary classrooms all day where literacy is really embedded in everything you do, if you can embed those, you know, TESL strategies, you really are building on their language skills all day in all subjects. And I think it's really effective that way.
I'm glad that you're having discussions about getting those students back in. And we need to get all the students back in, but I agree with you, I think it's critical that in-classroom instruction for the EL students are, is very important.
Do you have any other questions for either of them? Or, Tanya, did you have any further information to share?
We're just continuing with our district initiatives with Mr. Hicks' leadership. So, as you know, a school board regulation 219 we have is for, to, new hires within the first 18 months have 45 hours of sheltered instruction to support their class...
Have forty-five hours of sheltered instruction to support their classroom teaching. So we're continuing that. And then also we are continuing with our, now what was formerly TESL ELAD coursework. And we presently have about twenty-five teachers going through this first cohort of ELAD and they'll be finished at the end of the year. So continuing that just, as Mr. Hicks said, we've talked about, you mentioned equal participation and that's the word in the, in the. Case law actually that supports education for English learners and it's not just, I said that they get the permission slip to join some club after school in Spanish. It's that equal participation, the seven point five hours they're, they're at school, that they have an entry point and an access to the curriculum at a high level of rigor. Regardless of their level of language development. We say like it's amplification, not simplification.
Thank you. Well, thank you both. You do great work and we appreciate what you're doing for our students.
Thank you.
I also want to thank both of you for all the work that you're doing in helping our students. I completely agree with all the comments that have already been said about the importance of starting in elementary school, middle school. Those are critical grades that we really need to embed as much of the academic. Instruction as possible to make sure that they have a, a strong foundation. So thank you so much for all the working for scrutinizing all these programs that are so critical to the success of all students.
Thank you.
And Tanya, thank you for all your work you do getting our teachers ready to do that work. Next item on the agenda is item number twelve, informational update on capital improvements projects completed in the Carson City School District for the year. Twenty nineteen to twenty twenty. This is for discussion only and I'll welcome AJ Fueeling, Mark Kornick and Mark Johnson. Good evening, guys.
Probably not. Thank you, President Walker. Trustees, executive staff, thank you for having us tonight. It's been a while since I've seen y'all, so. We are going to talk a little bit about some of the projects we've done this summer. Be it capital, be it major maintenance, different funding streams. I'm going to grab a piece, some of my notes. I think I got most of this. Let's see. Strong one?
You know, Raymond's had a really good run with making sure all the technology's ready to go all year, so here we are, October and it's crazy town today, right Raymond?
Yes, I agree.
All right. So in, in our facilities master plan, starting in two thousand fifteen, these have been the priorities. And when we look at projects and we look at moving forward with things, health, safety and welfare, as well as equity. Code compliance, energy, operation efficiency, educational programs, which also includes capacity in the school. Because you can't increase programming out without some capacity. So starting with Pioneer this year, we, we remodeled these bathrooms that were from nineteen fifties. Has Art Deco tile in it and everything. So we tried to keep that tile and see what we could do with it. Put some courtyard new tree and then bottle fillers, which were happening all over the district because of COVID. As you can see, this is the picture of that restroom and all of these restrooms have new plumbing or new fixtures. New countertops, new sinks. You can see in the mirrors which are new, the partitions in the background and then some kind of floor treatment. They were old tile floors and we had them professionally steam cleaned. And then in some of the restrooms, we removed the flooring and went to polished concrete. And this was in B building. This is the standard that, of bottle fillers that we put in. Of course, we couldn't use the drinking fountains. We had to turn those off, but the bottle fillers were there and luckily the students have bottles that they can use. Fritch Elementary saw quite a few projects this summer and the first major project that we did there was to continue our single point of entry. Projects through the safety grant that we got. So we had office counter pass-through glass put in. There were some tenant improvements to enlarge a work area and a storage and additional file storage. New sidewalks in front of the A and B building, parking lot improvements, exterior doors, which is not easy in a building built nineteen sixty. Where the door frames are rusted into the blocks. So that was interesting project. And then that's building A student restroom that we remodeled. So this is the new pass-through glass, ADA on the far side. And then it, we opened up the conference room. They wanted a work area, an area to work with students and then there's a file room there as well. And new concrete in front of the building and just before we poured the new ramp, which was an ADA improvement as well. And this is the A building remodel. You can see the, kind of our standard partitions and then. No new countertops here because the china was still good. And Carson Middle School had some exterior work done, some drainage improvements, basketball court and parking lots were restriped and crack sealed. And some gym floor finishing to look at the basketball courts. Empire did not have a lot of improvements this year. School's in really good shape, but they did get their new bottle filler and that was extreme challenge in a block wall. Fremont Elementary, we had a, a bond project that we completed last year there for the expansion. And in that expansion, we, we created a learning area outside in one of the courtyards in the back. There's a bristle cone tree there and a couple of other trees and picnic tables where the CLS kids go out and, and work outside. The other side of courtyard we did this summer and it's more of an event center, gathering spot, that kind of thing. Parking lot restriping, roof repairs, drainage improvements and then the yellow wing got new carpet in all their classrooms. So this is that event center that we can now work on projects, whether they're community projects or school projects for a shade structure. Maybe a movie screen. They've talked about uses for promotions, et cetera. Mark Twain, similar issues because it's similar schools. They had some roofing improvements which were similar to Fremont. Parking improvements, crack ceiling in their parking lot, playground improvements and also they got Red Wing and Computer Lab new carpet. They got Yellow Lab last year, or Yellow Wing last year, so. This is their new playground equipment. And in Seelager, we finished up on projects there as well. When we did the Fremont project last year, we moved CLS program, the Career Life Skills Program from. From Seelager to Fremont and so we took some of those rooms and remodeled them this year into general classrooms. We also did a bathroom refresh on the main student bathroom and removed the portable, so one more portable down the drain. Concrete site improvements, did a lot of work on the playground and then we ended up securing the perimeter of that campus. Which previously hadn't really been secured during the day. We'd find people walking their dogs when we have PE out there. So we kind of secured that and then we opened it up for the public on the weekends to use that park-like setting, if you will. So this is the parking, playground looking to the north in the back. Came out really nice. Concrete work, where that truck was, there used to be a portable, no longer there. This was the old special ed room that we remodeled. There was a restroom in there that we tore out. And made a classroom out of it. Carson, hi. I'm kind of zipping through here. If you have any questions, just, you know, throw something at me or jump in. We did some, a remodel on the High Tech Center general pod area this summer. And I have a picture of that that I can show you. Student restrooms, all eight of the student restrooms that are around Senator Square have been remodeled. We replaced several entry doors to the north. Concrete seems to heave there and the doors tweak, get really tweaked. Replaced north and east windows. The north side is where a special ed is on the lower floor and those windows were single pane. So we ended up getting low E in there, so we're hoping that, it's a little chilly in those rooms, so we're hoping that'll help and save some energy. Abatement and tile replacement upstairs above the gym and behind the west bleachers. And then baseball got a new backstop and some improvements to their scorer's booth. So this is a picture of the. High Tech Center pod area. Used to have six pods in that area and now we have several tables. This can be used as an all-staff meeting area. We're looking at maybe putting a screen up at the end. That concrete block wall was capped with some solid surface material that, again, that's our staff did that in our shop. Did a really good job, our maintenance staff.
Looks beautiful. It really looks great.
Yeah, it came out really nice. Did a really good job. There's power along the walls so kids can plug in. And I neglected to mention before on the bathrooms, all the sinks that were made, we made the countertops and installed sinks. So we have some really talented people in our maintenance and saved quite a bit of money. As you can see, those sinks, all those sinks we made in our shop and there's new. At the high school, there's new hand dryers in all those rooms, new china, new faucets. The partitions are all new and the floors got, the bathrooms all got painted and the floors got steam cleaned. It's all tile floors. Those are the windows on the north side and then up above the stairs there, that door is, there's some windows there and there's some windows to the right of that. That are above the kitchen that were replaced as well. And then our backstop was a wooden backstop that was falling apart and so we, we formed in concrete there, new netting, new attachments. We also had some repairs done to the, would it be the left field bleachers? Did some rewiring because all that wire runs underground and got wet. So it was time. Boarderwick Bray Elementary, we removed another portable. We only have a couple left. Multipurpose room restrooms there got a refresh, which were really old and had VCT tile on the floor, which didn't work too well. Got a couple bottle fillers in the school, carpet replacement in a few rooms. And then right now, we're in the middle of a project with our, our consultant Benchmark Inc. They did the evaluation of all of our roofs a couple of years ago and concrete and asphalt. And so we've hired them to come in and help write a specification for this roof replacement of the multipurpose room building. It's a metal roof right now and so we're planning on going to bid here in the winter and late spring, going to construction. That's where the portable was. I just had to put that up there. And this is another picture of the countertops and, that we made and the sinks, a split picture. And then the new partitions and sealed concrete floor. Primary wing, bottle filler. And Gleason PDC remodeled those old restrooms, which is the same building as Pioneer. And, and actually the old Fremont on Fifth Street. There's a couple up in Reno too. My wife just moved into one, working for Washoe. Mini split heat and cool unit for the pit office area and then some striping there as well. But there's that, you can kind of see in the mirror, the gray partitions and that lovely green and pink tile.
What are the, the countertops made out of that you guys could make them?
It's a solid surface kind of, solid surface material, they call it. It's kind of a Corian material. So we buy it in sheets and cut out the sinks and then they glue the backsplash and you guys did a great job. And then district-wide, we did quite a few projects as well and nothing specific, but a lot of it had to do with the safety grant that we had. And we were able to increase our camera, the amount of cameras we have. Storefronts, pass-through windows in all the schools so to complete that single point entry. Safety bollards in front of Carson High School are probably the most noticeable. We have some of those at the student support. So that protects the fencing so that people can't run cars through the fencing into the kids' playgrounds. Sinage and then one of the bigger things I think is the keyless entry pads that we have. So we're going to start beta testing those and see how that goes. That would save us a lot on keys and locksmithing, those kind of things. And a safety, safety issue. If somebody loses one, we can immediately shut it off.
With that program, will you be able to tell who's in the building? Will you keep a record of the times that everybody comes in and out?
Yeah, we can. Yep. And, and then. Okay, so then, oh yeah, the new entry vestibule at Fritch that I showed you, that was under this grant. We lost the construction portion of the grant. The state took that back when COVID hit. So we were able to do the Fritch went-out operations and then the Eagle Valley vestibule, we're going to punch that out. Because right now the, the air hits, hits that open window as soon as you open the door. So we're just going to punch that out and we're going to include that in the expansion project. At the Greenhouse Project, the greenhouse behind Carson High School, an outdoor classroom is three-quarters of the way done. I got a picture here. I can show you that. We're almost there. New roof at the Operations Service Center, completely roofed. I don't, it hasn't been done since I've been here in twenty-three years, so. And, and we did a little bit of inverter and solar panel repair work this summer as well. And then every year we do roofing, asphalt, pavement, abatement, flooring and it's all preventative maintenance. That we kind of chip away. We find out what's the need each year and we do the one that needs the most. So this is just what that keyless entry pad looks like. I think there's a slot on the top or I think it's touch, you can touch your key to it as well. And then this is the classroom at the greenhouse. They're, they still haven't installed the front door, but the other windows are roll-down. And then we have skylights, so that can be opened up and used for greenhouse. up and used for greenhouse management classes, FFA classes, and then public events, public garden classes. All right, so on to our two approved bond projects that are underway right now. Eagle Valley Middle School Expansion and the District Office Remodel and Addition. Eagle Valley Expansion, new construction, approximately 20,000 square feet. Our budget's at 8.2 million right now. It's going to provide space for growth, STEM labs, classrooms, student restrooms, teacher restroom, storage. And then we have some TI work that we're going to do in that, miscellaneous TI work and additional parking. Some of the TI would be remodeling some existing space that we have, including Computer Lab and a possible Coral Classroom. A little bit of HVAC upgrades, and of course HVAC for the addition. Ben Word Bogoti Architect, which I'm sure you're all familiar with, has done so many projects with us, selected for that design, and Core Construction is our C Mar, our construction manager at risk. Currently, we're in schematic, and we're going to start construction this summer. It's kind of a tough picture to see, but the blue is more grading. The project will be off the southeast corner of the building, and it'll be two-story and connecting to existing hallways. And then our District Administration Office. Berger Hannafin's been selected for this project and is heading up the design team at a $1 million budget. Plans are in design development, about halfway. I think we got plans today, actually. The scope of the work is to add additional space, HVAC and electrical upgrades. Refresh would be painting, replacing carpet, ceiling tiles, entry landscaping, and then some tenant improvements inside the building as it exists right now, some remodel work.
Mark, how long have we had this projected on our capital projects? This has always been the stepchild of the capital projects.
Phase one was in 2005.
But you know, you could take your time on this because Mr. Stokes can't retire until this is completed. So just so you know, take your time.
It might be why he gave us the final go. And I just wanted to point out some of the COVID-related projects we did to support what was going on in the district. And this happened at various times. You know, we got the bottle fillers. We were three-quarters of the way there on bottle fillers, but we got all the schools equipped with that. Nurses clinics, we did some work in there, and then we had to locate for every clinic, we had to locate isolation rooms because our policy was to, if a student got sick, immediately they'd go to this isolation room, parents would be called, students would go home, et cetera. So finding those spaces that were close or at least connected so that most of the time they could be watched by the nurse as well was kind of tough. But we went with some of the suggestions from the schools, too, said, yeah, we can do it if you put it here. So we took some rooms that we had, made them into an isolation room. We took some of the nurses' offices, remodeled them a little bit, not a lot, just maybe new flooring because you want solid surface in nurses' office, and added, we've been adding some new exhaust systems in there, at least fans, so that we can exhaust those spaces and not throw that return air back into another space. Generally, that's how it is. We've also added HVAC controls for scheduling so that we can do more air flushes. We're doing a post and pre-occupancy flush every day of air. And then we upgraded our filters from MERV 8 to MERV 13, which is recommended by Azure, you know, Association of HVAC Engineers, something like that.
So did this take care of the concerns that at Carson Middle School that they had about the nurses with the isolation?
It has taken care of some, and it is still taking care. So we're still working on some of these things, trying to get these things installed. It just, things changed, and then it takes a bit of time to get the equipment and get it installed. And then we had, we did several custodial upgrades, especially with equipment. All of our schools are equipped with at least two electrostatic sprayers and then backpack sprayers for our sanitation and disinfecting. And then we received the Pennington Grant as well for sany carts, which are actually a roll-in cart teach a classroom. And you can, we can use the same product that we're using in our disinfectant process in these carts, and they can fog that room in about 10 minutes. If you have somebody sick, you can do it right away. And then the Cleanse Air units are air purification units that are used in doctors' offices, also have UV light, and you generally see them up high above doorways, that kind of thing. We will put one of those in each nurse's office in each isolation room, and both of those are set to ship this Friday. Hopefully have them soon. So it's a lot of extra items we put in for precaution into these rooms. Also, safety, instructional, wayfinding signage. You guys have been in the schools, you've probably seen this, whether it's social distancing, wear your mask, wash your hands, where to stand, where to sit, directional, as far as which way to walk up and down the stairs. So that was a large project that myself and Anseer really jumped into. Plexiglass knee guards in all of our cafeterias and some classrooms as well. And then we just have pallets of PPE and hand sanitizer and all those type of products in our warehouse. And we're stocked up pretty good on that. Finally, I just wanted to point out that through our sustainable partnership with Environment and Green Schools and funded by Tesla, we were able to work with McKinstry to develop this energy dashboard. And this will give us pretty much real-time information on most of our utilities. And when we first, we first did a benchmark with NV Energy in 2008, we were at an EUI, which is Energy Usage Index. We were at an EUI of over 60. We're at 62. In 2014, we did it again after we got the solar panels in, did lighting retrofits, and we were at about a 48. And then, as you probably remember, with McKinstry a couple years ago, we did Energy Savings Performance Contract with them, which AJ was talking about today. We brought that down to just over 40, and I've been wanting to get it to 30, into the 30s. I mean, that's really low. And so this is last year, and you can see, most of our schools are under 40. And soon as we do that district office remodel, we're going to get that number down, too. So right now, we're averaging at 36 for last year, 36.5. So that's a really low number, and we're talking about paying back that savings every year. This year, it looks like we're trending more to like the 420,000, and a lot of that has to do with the COVID. Three months, in those three months, we saved about $111,000 in energy, just because we weren't in the buildings. The other thing that we're measuring on this is waste. And through our recycle program and COVID last year, we're down 47% in waste that we're putting back into landfill. And the schools have done an amazing job with recycling. And a lot of this goes along with what Mr. Hicks was talking about, project-based learning, kids learning about that. And Empire's huge champion when it comes to that. And that's the last slide I got. Is there any questions?
Joe, and then Richard.
So you guys really haven't been doing much, is what you're telling us?
Had a little bit of time.
No, I mean, there's been a lot of work throughout the district, and anytime we can save energy and, like you always say, you know, get our, you know, improve our efficiencies and whatnot, it's a good thing. So thanks for staying the course and helping us out here. We've done good work.
Thank you.
Yeah, I also wanted, excuse me, thank you. Our schools are in great shape, and I have to give that to you and your team. You know, as I visit the schools and I drive around them, they all look pretty amazing, really, for some of the ages of the schools. So thank you guys very much. A lot of hard work, and it's appreciated by the community and by us, too. But I have one other question. At one time, I visited the PDC building, and one of the concerns they had was security at the front door, and I didn't know if in all these projects, if that had been addressed or can be addressed.
Well, we do have a, it's not really a single-point entry, but we do have Plexiglas on that front entry counter, if you will. But we don't have, if somebody comes in the front door, they have access to the building. Yeah, so we haven't, we haven't moved forward on that right now. Typically, we're taking care of schools and the kids first, but that could be something to be on our radar in the future.
Yeah, it was important to them, the people who occupy that building, and maybe just a keyless entry to start.
Yeah, sure.
I think they are getting the keyless entry there.
Yep.
President Walker, if I just, I wanted to say, well, recognize the other Mark in the background who's reveling in the Dodgers' World Series victory right now.
He got a headphone here?
Yeah. Mark has been such a great addition over the last number of years, and he, in the summertime, is just running around this district, and you could see why. And he gets great support, and I get great support from Mark. I think I've learned more from Mark in the last six and a half years I've been here than I could ever believe that he learned from me. So it's just a great team helping support the district and do a lot of these types of projects. I wanted to point out also that dashboard that Mark showed at the end, there is much, much more to it than just that single slide. And when McKinstry went through all these projects with us and said, here's what we're going to do, they talked about the best districts that they worked with, the best schools they worked with. And the most efficient district or building that they had was a single school. I don't know if it was, I don't think it was a charter school. It was just a single school, though, on a reservation in Colorado. And I think their EUI overall for that building was like 37. So that was the most efficient that they had worked with. And we're almost there for every building in our district. And once we get the district office taken care of, I mean, literally, they're a national company, and we're about the most efficient, I think, will be the most efficient there is. So I just, again, kudos to Mark and the leadership he brings with kind of those, those goals that he's had here over the last, how long you been here? 23? 23 years? So that's a lot of time and effort put in. I also wanted to mention the Eagle Valley project. Costs continue to escalate absurdly, it seems, so that project likely will come in at a higher price tag than the 8.2 million we initially projected. Mr. Wallace's request of having the third floor to himself is rather expensive, with the jacuzzi amongst other things. So we'll be coming back with updates on that as we find out more.
Well, it's a good thing there's going to be a new president soon that's going to be dealing with those issues.
I would like to say I'd love to come back sometime and show you that dashboard. And also, we did a greenhouse submission, emissions report in the last, we're just getting the results. And I know last year, we saved over 11,000 metric tons of CO2 into the environment. So I'd love to come back, maybe with one of the McKinstry folks, and run you through it sometime.
Sure. I'll work with Mr. Stokes, and we could get that on an agenda. Thank you for all you do, all three of you. We appreciate it. Thank you. And I'll move this meeting forward. It's almost nine o'clock, and we know how Trustee Wilkie gets once nine o'clock hits. Our next item on the agenda is item number 12, which is, or item number 13, discussion, possible action to cancel the December 22, 2020 school board meeting. This is her possible action.
I move that the Carson City School District Board of Trustees cancel the December 22, 2020 school board meeting.
Second by Wilkie, just to put Mr. Walker out of his misery, one meeting less, since I was the person that got you into this.
Yeah, someone recruited me for this, right, Stacy? So we have a motion from Joe.
So we're getting you out of one meeting.
Do we have any public comment?
Seeing no public comment online.
All right, any public comment in the room? Seeing none. Any public comment on the email?
No, Mr. Walker, no public comment.
Okay, I'll call the question. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Item number 14 on the agenda is approval of consent agenda. This is her possible action.
I move that the Carson City School District Board of Trustees approve the consent agenda as submitted.
Second.
All right, we have a motion from Dawn, second from Lupe. Any discussion from the trustees? Seeing none. Any public comment?
Seeing no public comment online.
Any public comment in the room? Seeing none. Any public comment on email?
No public comment.
Okay, I'll call the question. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Item number 15, informational items. Does anybody have any questions for Mr. Stokes or district staff about informational items? Seeing none. We'll move on to requests for future agenda topics. And so I'm sure Mr. Stokes has the request from Mark to talk about the dashboard. I'll work with Mr. Stokes to start looking at the annual evaluation on the superintendent, and maybe we could get that done in November as opposed to our December meeting, if possible. So at the next meeting, we'll probably have a discussion about the tool we have and any revisions we want to make or Mr. Stokes is suggesting. Any other possible agenda topics? Seeing none. We will adjourn the meeting at 9:00 PM. You are welcome, Trustee Wilkie.
Thank you, President Walker.